Good evening, welcome to the study session due twenty seven twenty twenty three. Donna, we do a roll call, please.
I will. Councilmember Boden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Baron Esco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell, present, and Councilmember Peterson, here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Public Works Director Jay Harris has an update about street standards.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, this is sort of meeting is probably number three because I gave one a long time ago, but in recent memory, this is meeting number two. Uh, Jay Harris, Republic Works Director, good evening, council. Um, so tonight I wanted to talk to you more, I'm being a little more precise in the last meeting. I sort of threw out like a menu and the mayor had mentioned, hey, can we just sort of deal with one thing at a time here? So I sort of pared it back to just a couple of discussions tonight. Um, the goal is is to adopt an engineering design standards manual, probably some municipal code revisions also. Um, that allow our staff to issue permits to a developer and be able to tell them exactly what the frontage improvements are, uh, street frontage improvements in this case. So with that, uh, we'll jump into the presentation. Um, so here's the current issue right now that the sidewalks in nowhere, people had sort of coined. Uh, I found one where there was a sidewalk and there's no sidewalks probably within five hundred feet or more of that particular walk. The funny thing is, is they built it on one side of the house, but not on the street where they park the cars. So I don't know if they did that on their own or whatever, how that all happened, I don't know. But um, anyways, uh, that's one thing. And then, uh, I mean, a concern is, is if you have a single lot, single property owner, they just want to build a house. How do we deal with that? I found a little graphic, and this isn't in our city. Uh, something that was being required of a guy that had a raised yard, they wanted to put a sidewalk in. And you could see to get the sidewalk through there, that's a significant improvement, right? Is an example of something somebody might require. Um, and to the goal wasn't to remove the power hole maybe or something is what I was thinking. And then what do we do with gravel roadways also? Um, you can see Puget Street, Brent is one that said, hey, make sure you put a picture of Puget in there. Because there's some houses along it, we got some up at Capitol Hill too, that these are gravel roads. I mean, the goal of a city would be getting out of the gravel road business someday, right? Um, in Newburgh, we still had a couple of miles of gravel roads, the city was double this size. So if we can start dealing with the gravel roads now and have some good policies, these could be city projects, local improvement districts, that sort of thing. That we get into paved streets for everybody, I think would be a good council goal down the road. And then you have under improved roadways, I did go back real quick, I want to show you Ward Road. Um, this little narrow thing that has been paved fifty years ago. And um, it doesn't meet fire department standards, um, which is twenty feet wide. Um, anyways, and the the pavement isn't of any substance, it's probably be easier if it was gravel at this point. Rather than trying to maintain, you know, the potholes in a paved roadway like that, and next slide. So, uh, the last study session on May ninth, uh, here are the comments and our city manager did a great job. Uh, documenting those at the last meeting and he actually emailed about, what, the day, a couple days later or something, this, and so. If, when he sends those out, if you guys say, hey, I never said that, or I was quoted wrong, you know, get back to him because we can, or me. Cause we can make mistakes, but I think it's a good way to follow up on what was the last conversation? What were some of the questions? Because we definitely want to answer the the questions that you had at the last meeting. So, um, Council McDowell had said, um, what is the most viable way for street installation to occur? City project or developer project? And um, it's it's more efficient for the small developer projects to install the street improvements concurrent with other things you're doing on the site such as buildings. Um, that, you know, they already have concrete there, right? They're doing driveways, they're doing foundations, they're doing all sorts of things. Um, and also with that though, the city did take it on. Um, we don't have the manpower or or financial resources right now. Um, to complete a street project for, you know, private developments. Um, you know, maybe we can collect a fee in lieu or that sort of thing, but we still would need to have someone design it. And typically wouldn't design just for one house, we usually do quite a bit larger projects, right? So we would do, if if we were to do it in-house, we would need to bring on probably another person to be able to do that. Um, and um, so we would design it in-house, it'd be probably a block on project sort of thing. We'd have to prioritize those, who comes first, you know, that sort of thing. And so, um, and then what are we, we have painting jobs that compete with that, Riverwood Avenue jobs that compete with that, all the other road things that we're doing, you know, you just sort of, you tack one more on at that point. Um, we only have four point six five people in the street budget right now, that's everything, that's engineering, that's maintenance. And so the maintenance guys, you know, they're maintaining the whole right of way, you know, that's, they're doing a lot of mowing right now, obviously. Uh, trying to open up vision clearance, street signs, uh, tree trimming, we get into a lot of that. A potholing, uh, cry, we're gonna go out crack ceiling in two weeks, you're gonna see the guys out doing on that. Um, we see, uh, we're out there trying to get some, oh, we do spot paving, we have a grinder, we can go do some inlays and that sort of thing, well. Anyways, uh, we're down one F T E in the street department right now, so that's three point six five. I am a piece of the street, there's little other little pieces around, we only have a couple of people we send out, right? So we're doing a lot with just a couple of people in the street budget. And then worse yet, we have a two million dollar budget. Five hundred thousand dollars of the general fund is going in there, okay? Got a lot of woes in the general fund, that's a big transfer to streets. Without that money though, streets really dry us up, right? So, uh, anyways, I just wanted to point out all the different problems, it's the street fund, finances and and people is some of it.
I always say what comes first, the chicken or the egg? So do we ask the developer? Do we get the developer to do all the development before he develops property for housing? Or do we, we do that ourselves? And what's cheaper, what's the best, you know?
Yeah, so, uh, the way to do it is developer does it upfront with his improvements, that'd be a short plat, a subdivision plat. You know, they would all do all their street improvements with that. What happened is, is a lot of the the problems we're having now, those lots were platted in the eighteen nineties, nineteen tens, that sort of thing. We're dealing with plats that were corded that didn't have sewer, they didn't put really any streets in, there were dirt roads. And so we're trying to climb out of a system, so you go back and look at a lot of the old resolutions about um, local improvement districts are real big back in the day. That, you know, four houses would go in, it's like, we're tired of mud roads, let's go get them paved. So then the city would go and assess the properties and do a local improvement district. Um, a lot of cities have got away from L I Ds because they're contentious. That you'll have meetings here and you'll fill up this room with people, you know, will be throwing, you know, the tomatoes at you. That, you know, why are we being assessed? We're already being taxed too much, you know, and all that. So, um, anyway, so there, and the the some of that's in some further questions. And so the second question is the fee in lieu of the only appropriate option. So we would consider a fee in lieu of maybe for some half street improvements, maybe for a sidewalk, you know, extension that they don't put in, but we'd maybe do a critical route. Um, so, uh, most cities usually just require that developments, you put in a half street improvement. And if it isn't viable, you just probably need to wait, that'd be curb, sidewalk and the half street. And that just took took care for that city. They don't have to deal with the problem of parsing out what we're gonna be parsing out tonight, okay? It's an easy answer to a complex problem, okay? So, um, so, uh, but, uh, you know, you gotta remember you got paving, curbs, street trees, driveway approaches, sidewalks. And, uh, if you do put in half streets, eventually they connect, right? So if if half streets would have been put in a long time ago, certainly in the fifties or the sixties, where a lot of cities just said, you put in half street improvements. Um, a lot of those would be connecting today, the city comes in later and finishes it out, uh, City of Tiger is a good example. Um, that I thought twenty-five years ago as a young engineer, when I was doing projects there, why are they requiring these half streets to nowhere? And, uh, it ended up that they come through, got some alternate funding and sealed them together with a few public improvement projects. And, um, it's it's worked out pretty good, uh, for them there. You do have to have some larger undeveloped stretches though, where you get some larger frontage improvements. You know, you can't have fifty feet, go two hundred feet, at fifty feet, two hundred feet. And so we're gonna get to that in a minute and and what we're suggesting this evening as a possible policy decision. So, um, other, uh, the funding options though, um, is the local improvement district. You know, we've fallen away from that in the last ten years or so, twenty maybe, you know, I haven't done one, we didn't do one in Newburgh. Because they're just, you fill the room of people and, um, you know, I can see an L I D in a lot of cases. But if you're gonna do it, it'd be a wo- big local improvement district for blocks and blocks and blocks and that sort of thing, you know? Go big with something like that, you wouldn't go with smaller ones. And then those property owners would directly benefit by a street improvement, right? And and maybe some sidewalk extensions and that sort of thing, that it's gonna increase the value of their homes. Uh, probably make them a little more sellable, especially ones that are on gravel road with a lot of dust and that sort of.
L I Ds can be driven by the residents too.
Yep.
Certainly come to the city and request the, um, included in L I D, move forward with the people in their street or block or greater area.
Do you remember when the last L I D was done?
There wasn't since, I I've been here three years.
Oh, it was.
And where it was? Do you remember where it, where it was?
Probably have some sewer L I Ds, you see sewers a lot.
The only one I recall was on the south side of town.
I feel frustrated.
Correctly, um, exactly.
Behind the old red apple in that vicinity was.
Something, something.
Didn't that have to be done because of the sewer line or something like that?
Years ago. I I think it's specific to street improvements.
Okay.
I I if I remember.
I do remember that one.
To get it straight paid. But we'd have to do some research to.
Well, they were thrilled, the neighbor, the neighborhood was thrilled to have that done, the roads were so bad through there. That's what I remember. Okay.
Yeah.
So a couple of, so, uh, the council can approve the L I D or they could be petitioned, petitioned by the property owners. There's also like o- local option, uh, transportation taxes, which could require some voter approval. Um, you, or we can increase the T V D, um, sales tax or add on like a vehicle registration fee. Those are would all be voter approval, so there are some voter approval functions that we could do to increase transportation funding. So, um, and then there, Eric, uh, you had mentioned that you wanted to see, uh, the streets and conditions in a matrix. We'll do that in the future, once we figure out what the matrix is, right? Um, then we'll put something together that's logical, it's a flowchart type of Harold system. And then run that, uh, through you guys so you can check it out. Um, you'd, uh, mentioned that, uh, the owner shouldn't be, uh, responsible for sidewalk maintenance. Currently in the municipal code, it has the abiding owner, um, as, uh, shall maintain and repair and reconstruct the sidewalks. And R C W also backs it up, so, um, the revised code of Washington, um, states that, uh, it allows city to delegate or designate that authority. So we're within, you know, state law to designate that, and that can be changed by council, right? The the vote of the council.
I I just meant like, you know, downtown railroad, you got all those trees pushing the sidewalk up, do we want those property owners to go out there and and fix that, I mean.
So, and that's, I would like to propose a change there down the road that I think in this downtown commercial district, I'm used to the city maintaining the sidewalks for a high pedestrian benefit. Um, I think it's in public interest for our street division to maintain that, that's for you guys to decide though. Residential districts, not as much so, but we want to encourage a lot of foot traffic down there, right? And I wouldn't recommend like on Olympic Highway North or anything like that either. But if you're in a downtown core, I think it benefits the abiding property owners through the city, um, to do those repairs. I, the previous city I worked for, they didn't. And, um, the 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 property owners were grinding around the trees and doing all sorts of things, you know, outside their shops and whatever. And I I think it's a better public function just for that small block for us to take care of that. So when I came in with the new design standards, I would probably include that that would be the one sidewalk district. That the the city would maintain the trees and the sidewalk, and then all other locations would be maintained by the abiding property owners.
I, I have said this a million times and not, maybe not that many times, but I have an issue with the city owning the sidewalk in front of someone's house, but the homeowner has to keep repaired if it needs to be repaired.
Yeah, so, uh, the city actually doesn't own the sidewalk, we maintain the right of way for the benefit of all the public. So we're maintaining the street and the curbs, right, and the pavement. The abiding property owners responsible for landscape strip if they have one. Um, and, uh, the it's street trees and and sidewalks. So, but that's for all the enjoyment of all property owners, right, and within the whole city, it's it's open to everybody, right? So, um, anyways, I, I understand, um, in terms of liability, there's some liability on the property owner that you need to maintain to walk in front of your house. And ninety-nine percent of the cities have property owners maintaining these, you know, there's very few. Um, again, if we want to shift to that model, um, we would need to look at financially how we're gonna be able to do that. You know, that we need to go out and be proactive, have people, have concrete, have sidewalk grinding and all that. I mean, it's another service we would bring on, obviously.
To be clear, at this point, we're not proactively pursuing sidewalk replacement and maintenance amongst our property owners, you know, that is.
No, somebody slips, picks and falls, it's the homeowner. He's on the hook.
I mean.
And that's in the United States of America, it's just.
When we get a complaint though, you know, we report it to the property owner and tell them it's their responsibility and they need to go fix it, right? So, uh.
Can't block the sidewalk.
We have, yeah.
It work, reactive code enforcement is what it is.
Yeah.
I still, I just, it's just like, would be like, um, this is crazy to say this, but it would be like the city taking your house for something and then you having to make the repairs on it, even though they own the house. I I just have an issue with it.
If it's a detriment to the best rest of the community.
What is?
Like a safety, if it's a safety issue to the community around it.
Yeah, I.
I understand your feelings on it.
Yeah, it's just something, I don't know, until we get money to do projects on sidewalks, which, you know, that may be a long time, I don't know. I know you do.
Caught up on the street system, right, and sidewalks are important too, right?
That's right.
Want to promote healthy activity and people walking, right? So they have an important function in the community, so it can't all be about cars, right?
So you get a little old lady that owns the house and her sidewalk that the city is cities. She's expected to maintain it, she has no money, she has nobody to help her. Someone falls on that sidewalk and then they, they come out and sue her. You know, where, where's that person? I mean, that's just something to think about.
So, um, a couple of.
To be clear, the the city isn't one person, right? The city is the entire community, you know?
Right, I know.
Right, they share in that part of that public infrastructure.
And that's why our, the Wa- the state of Washington has what's called joint and several liability. And if the city is one percent at fault, the city has the deeper pockets, the city is going to pay in the lawsuit. I think we're worried about an issue, um, that isn't really a big issue, um, I I don't think. Like they're saying, I I don't, how many claims a year are we getting related to sidewalk issues?
In front of residential.
In front of residential, right?
Yeah, we already heard one. I've, since I've been here, I've seen two.
Oh, yeah.
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 Okay. How much of it was the city's fault and the homeowner's fault because of, you know, unmaintained vegetation or bad drainage or whatever, right? You could, you could probably go go deep on this, but.
So if if you folks are interested, we could set up a small little grant fund, it would be on a year by year basis, I did this with the last city. We started with twenty thousand dollars, okay? And it was a first come, first served basis, you had to give an application and that's certain criteria. And that we can assist with some sidewalk repairs, um, you know, something like that. At least there was a program to assist low income property owners, that sort of thing. Um, you know, if you're interested, we could talk about more at another date, I'm trying to did get through street standards, sidewalks are a piece of it, I get it. But, uh, I mean, we we can come back later and talk about that a little more if, if there's consensus.
Is there a possibility, I know that you're gonna be sealing the cracks in the roads? That's with that kind of rubbery stuff, that kind of glue?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any possibility of, of finding out where some sidewalks might need some of that, fill in the cracks?
We typically on sidewalks grind out the humps and replace anything that's cracked. Um, the the cracking compounds and and patching stuff just don't wear well. Um, they just pop back out with three s- cycles, so we typically have to replace, if it's cracked that bad, a new piece of sidewalks going in, a new panel.
Most development that you've seen where they're building new neighborhoods, you know, hundred homes or more or something like that, um. Typically, the developer wants to design sidewalks in their project, for a reason, and why is that? Because it sells, people, people want a walkable communities, right? So, we're, our long-term focus here, albeit we have projects that happen throughout the year that um, in our can, our inconveniences at times, but the long-term approach is what we're focusing on, which is making the community desirable for people to want to develop. And, and again, what we're seeing with the larger projects that have been pitched to us is lots of sidewalks, lots, lots of walkability interconnected services and everything else. So our code could be friendly to that design that people are looking for.
And currently is, it's the developed neighborhoods that have a small amount of infill is where we're bumping into issues. And, uh, and I'll get with that resolution here in in a minute, um, so, uh. I, number five, what is proposed in lieu of fee? So if if we chose to adopt some frontage improvement charges, um, there's some fee estimates below. And I took it from Riverwood Avenue, we added a little bit for design and bidding, construction inspections. So, uh, materials and installation costs, uh, sidewalks will be about eight dollars a square foot. A concrete curb is about twenty-two dollars a foot. Um, to overlay a gravel road is about eight dollars a square foot. If you were to dig the road out and put, uh, the base rock in and pave it, it's about fifteen dollars a square foot. And then if you're doing a concrete storm inlet, about twenty-two hundred dollars, twelve inch storm, uh, the PVC piping's about ninety. And to put in a drywall, drywall's about thirty-five hundred, those are just sort of numbers like that. And we'll talk more about that frontage improvement charges a little further in the presentation.
Is that labor and materials, these numbers?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
No. So, um, can, uh, T I D grants, uh, be used to, uh, supplement, uh, in lieu of fees collected for residential projects? And so the the Transportation Improvement Board funding is typically limited to collector and archer roadways. Not as much local low volume streets, so I'd say probably not. Now, some of these developments do back up, you know, to, but they're not all on local roads, right? And so the answer would be yes for the higher, uh, volume type of roadways. If there are, you know, some houses along those roadways that still need to be developed. So it's sort of a mostly no, but a little bit of yes, that we we could use some additional funding. Um, we, uh, pay twelve and a half cents to every dollar we get, um, from D I B. Um, in in terms of grant funding, um, for projects, but usually they're on on higher volume roadways. So narrow streets are good, um, that, uh, you agree with traffic calming mess- methods. So the current local street width is forty feet, just so you guys know, uh, we're probably gonna go to thirty-two feet in the new standards, that's the international fire code. Now, remember, you're driving on a thirty-two foot wide roadway, you got about seven feet to park it on one side, maybe eight, depending on the car's size. Another seven feet on the other, okay? Well, then your travel lane, if you take sixteen minus thirty-two, how much you got? You have sixteen, okay? Oh, sixteen for two cars, sort of works, okay? A truck and a car starts getting a little tight, so what happens is residential driveways, people sort of move over, the other guy drives by. And so you want your local streets to be gridded out well, you can't go fifteen blocks with a local street, right? There needs to be a lot of other local streets, keep the volumes down, people sort of scoot over, go into driveways every once in a while to go around the Amazon truck. That sort of thing, but you get traffic calming, okay, it's inherent. And then you look at how often are there doubled up cars all the way down the street? Usually in the evening, the amount of deliveries and and larger trucks usually go down in the evenings also. So they work out good from what I've seen, I think thirty-two is a good number. Um, it reduces by eight feet of the width in in our current standards. And then, um, a counselor bow, um, how's the habitat on project on Park Street affected? And, um, the street centers that we're talking about are in the in our zone. Habitat for Humanity is in the, uh, Commercial Residential Valley Zoning District. And, uh, we weren't going to apply infill street standards to a commercial zone.
What commercial business is on Park Street?
Just one, yeah, right, mechanic.
The what? They're still there?
Yeah.
And then you have the apartment site, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, who's the mechanic?
The 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 underlying issue is it's zoned to appropriately for commercial use, right?
Right.
So it, you can't open a commercial business there. And it's not just residential use.
Yeah, okay.
So it's the underlying zoning, not not the actual use right now.
Yeah, I think the mechanic store was there, or shop was there before. Any other houses or apartment houses on that street.
There'll be some more commercial on that street soon.
So, uh, Council Peter said, how are frontage improvements progressively tied together at different stages and dates with existing infrastructure? Spoke about that a little bit, but, um, you know, mostly, uh, most cities require just half street improvements to go in. Eventually you gotta stitch them together though, right? So if there's huge gaps, it is a problem, right? And you'll see in a bit, I, that's the one that figured it out, um, how we think we can get around that where you keep small gaps that maybe need to be filled into the future, build half streets for longer stretches. But if there is no half street, don't build it if there's a bunch of already houses in there. We'll have some things we're gonna talk about in a minute on that. But, um, over time, they do get stitched together, um, these could be with, uh, uh, redevelopment type of clauses. We're gonna talk about that a little bit later too, that, um, if replacement structures and that sort of thing go in, you know, this is way down the road. That, uh, frontage improvements could apply at that point, so, um. We also, um, on city initiated projects, so when we go replace a sewer line or a water line, we usually go in and do street advancements also. So at that time, when we replace sewer line, if there's some curb and sidewalk and a few sections that need to be finished with the utility improvement project, we'd go knock out the the street project. Um, so like we did with the basin three project, that that was a huge example of something, right? A a big project, um, that.
All the basin projects so far, I mean, my house in the nineties, they did this, all the sidewalks that are new there is because of the basin project.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, we can look at those in the future too, as we replace these pipes in these older neighborhoods.
And are, are we able to do sidewalks with the sewer basin project because essentially we're we're, we're upgrading sewer and we're eliminating like certain ditches and things like that and going into a curb and gutter.
We all alternate funding. Yeah.
So what about the Hillcrest area, Beverly Heights? That guts paved before water and sewer, it was la- laid under there? That, yeah, direction, is that right?
Yeah, I don't know.
People's side.
It was straight. No, uh, Hillcrest of Beverly Heights, up off five corners of that direction.
I remember it. But then, well, I remember when Councilmember Feas was here, it was in front of her house, they had put new pavement for the roadway. And then very shortly thereafter, I want to say within two years, came in and pulled it all up and put in the new sewer basin. So it was just a timing of roadway improvements and infrastructure.
Think that was just the kind of skim code of asphalt though, they did.
Very possible.
Right, yeah, it was pretty.
Beverly Heights that goes out.
Like the.
That was a waterline replacement project that, that, um, installed that.
Wasn't Lake Boulevard a T I D project?
At least so, yeah.
Got it.
Tie, tie your way Lake Boulevard from, uh, the Mill Street, you know, high, uh, first street, um, intersection all the way up to city limits.
Yeah, that's where it's put sewer and no laterals, right? To what?
Right.
That stuff, some didn't, if they didn't have their vacant lots or something that is standing up.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's usually a part of it, I mean, that you have to get there like infrastructure.
Yeah.
The sewer is brand new.
And that goes to every, everybody's, when they, they're septic without, they can.
Yeah, they did a majority of the houses that were there, they studied them.
Okay.
So councillor Gutierrez, um, you're interested in collecting fees upfront over frontage improvements. Need certainly for city and developer, highest impact envi- highest environmental standards. Um, so yeah, we could look at fees. I gave some of the numbers on the prior page. Um, but for developments for parking strips um, and sidewalk and that curb and paving. Um, one thing we need to consider though is to make sure that minimal improvements that meet fire code for safety are put in. So there are some existing lots that front a street like you were seeing earlier. That it doesn't even meet fire standards, right? And so there's a minimum improvement. If we did collect frontage improvements, we need to make sure there's a minimum base improvement. Just for fire life safety, um, that would need to go in. And so um, anyways, if we did collect fees, we would design, we bid larger projects, we'd save up money obviously. Um, and constructed by the in city engineering at a later date. We obviously would need to add staff to do that. That's things that we're not doing right now. Um, and uh, cause we we have a lot of different, obviously, street projects we're working on.
Yeah.
So somebody, it's a model that can be considered, right?
I wanna be clear, I I have no problem with new development to, you know, Peacock Ridge and many like it. Doing all of this. My concern is 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 some of these lots downtown and on Mountain View where there's a just an empty lot. And then thirty houses on that block and the only sidewalk gonna be there for the next thirty years is in front of that. That one lot that gets built. That's my concern. New development, I believe should do. Everything that they need to do, um. To make it walkable and and you know, beautiful and the water runs the right direction and you know, and everything, I think.
Yeah, we're already on board with that. That's already in the standard. So uh, that and that he's into number eleven. You know, what is the definition of infill? We're gonna follow up on sides with that.
Can I emphasize the environmental standards? Because we have two fish salmon stream creeks coming up and down. We eat out of the, out of the bay from oysters and shellfish. And that's, it's very important for me that we have the highest environmental standards, especially in treatment of our water and. And precious resources, so.
Yeah, and the uh, you know, Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual that we're under now. When you're creating new and previous services, you're you're treating that water, infiltrating where you can. Um, detaining it if if you can't infiltrate it. So um, we're in terms of stormwater, we're on the right track.
And also having the set of sites for um, recharge. So. Um, all of that I think is important if we have development here, because we have something that's special and unique, unique. Not very unique, unique. It's singular beauty that we have with the sound. And the water and where we're placed. So I I believe that we have the highest responsibility to take care of that and maintain that. Um, while we develop and create. Um, livable place. It must also be environmentally sound as well as economically sound.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's we're pretty on board with that, especially the Department of Economy Manual is pretty progressive. It is, and you know, it's statewide too. Um, you know, in Oregon where I came from, every county and every city sort of had their own version of things. And it was really hard to map out. And so I like that the state of Washington actually has one manual that applies to everybody. And it really allows it, the engineers in the world and the community to really know how to design things properly. And so when some of the bigger subdivisions go in, um, you're gonna see significant stormwater ponds. And you know, to cut back on the flow and to treat the water and that sort of thing. So um, you'll see a difference and you'll see some open space parks too, which you know, is part of some of our parks.
That's like the big, that's like over in the housing developments in Olympia, the big ponds, they're. Sometimes they're full, sometimes they aren't.
That's what you can.
So that's gonna be a requirement of these new developments, right? Okay.
It's better requirement.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I know that. I'm I'm talking about what.
Yeah, we get you both. Lakeview House in the winter and a hole in the summer.
So, Jayber, I have a question about um, the in lieu of, so. In some ways, it makes a lot of sense to me because if you're gonna put in a tiny little patch, it's not gonna go to anything. It makes more sense to put it in a more significant project than maybe has a better benefit for a larger public. My my worry with that is that if we don't have a mechanism to either spend those dollars as they're coming in. Our buying power and those dollars is going down, so we're collecting five hundred dollars, let's say, and that project. When we get to it in ten years, it's gonna cost us far more than five hundred dollars. So how are we managing? I guess that piece of um, fee in lieu of with regards to um. I guess just our our budget on that side of things.
Yeah, so I mean, when you collect the money and go into a fund, it could be a sidewalk fund or a paving fund, because they are sort of different functions, right? And then our engineering division would need to make sure we kept those spent down. And so as we saved up enough money, you know, for like a sidewalk project on a critical pedestrian route or something. Where we took sidewalk fee in luas, um, we would schedule out projects every couple of years. To go spend those funds down on what council thinks are our priority projects.
That's the end now, right? How many infill lots you're going to have? What's the, what's the? Sum of the of the in lieu of fee on that.
How many houses are gonna burn down or? You know that.
How many infill lots are gonna be developed?
Right, right.
If it's twenty a year as. You know, maybe you can do something. If it's five a year, we're probably, that buying power is probably not gonna be there um, in the next year.
Well, and it costs the city more to, as we've talked about before, it costs the city more to. Do these projects than have private development take care of these projects. So I mean. There's a balancing act here, right? And giving flexibility and encouraging growth and development in a meaningful way, but also realizing that. Those dollars may not be affecting the change we're wanting to see long term.
That's that's correct. So councillor Sherman, you like the meetings on collector's snow storage and we're gonna include that as a design element uh, for collector roadways. Um, councillor Gutierrez, um, you want promotion of infill as. On open rightaways is a priority and uh, that is important. We also have obviously the brand new subdivisions are going in also. So it'll sort of give people a choice. You can live on a little more rural street with on an infill house. Or go buy in a whole subdivision and maybe the lots are a little, probably a little tighter too, most likely, right? In a lot of instances. Um, councillor Bowe was the impact to small builder. One or two lots is not feasible for the installation of improvements. And so the financial impact of a small builder to construct street improvements should be similar to fees collected by the city. Unless we choose subsidized cost. Um, that the city managed public improvement projects are typically more expensive as our project may have to pay prevailing wages. And um, also larger projects trigger stormwater requirements, right? These little small projects where you're putting a sidewalk and a little frontage improvement. Usually don't trigger on the Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual uh, stuff. You still have to infiltrate and take care of the water. But it's not like a huge pond and you know, that sort of thing. So if the city does a whole block in the future and and pave it. Um, it's likely we're gonna have to, if we can't infiltrate it, we're gonna have to find property to put in a detention pond and that sort of thing. So. These small piecemeal projects add up to a full improvement in the future. They do circumvent some stormwater projects or part of the project, right? So um, councillor Boat was interested in the matrix. Um, we'll we'll get back to you on that. And then we didn't know who this came from, but uh, how are gravel streets addressed? So um, we do require paving of interior streets and site frontage improvements for new residential developments. That are subdividing property. These are the larger ones. And then subdivisions are also required to improve offsite or gravel substandard roadways as as like mitigation. So if I'm doing a twenty lot subdivision and I gotta go out on a gravel road. We're gonna have you pave that gravel road, cause as an impact. Now, if it's only a four lot subdivision, you start getting into a problem. Of impact versus cost and and that sort of thing. So um, it's the whole gravel road discussion is interesting. Um, i- i- if you're chasing to a gravel road, we're gonna talk about that here on the coming slides. So before that though, I wanted to talk about our pedestrian map. So this critical pedestrian map is in the Engineering Design Standards Manual. This is an update to the two thousand nineteen map. What we did here is showed in different colors. In red, you can see is asphalt pedestrian on one side of the road. Um, blue is concrete on one side of the road, um, dark blue is concrete on both sides of the road. And then uh, then there's a mix of asphalt and concrete on both sides of the road. And then uh, the uh, magenta or gold, I'm sorry, the gold color is where there's currently no sidewalk. But that is, would be considered a pedestrian route that needs to be developed in the future. So this map needs some more work and that sort of thing. But what the goal was, was this, is if I live in a neighborhood that's primarily built out. I should be able to get onto a sidewalk after I walk down a block, maybe two, that sort of thing. Then I stroll down the edge of the pavement and eventually I'm on a sidewalk and I can go running. Or push the baby in the stroller or whatever to get back home again. I'm going up the side, I'm going on a shoulder or whatever. Remember, these are local streets that you're you're with your baby, right, or with your kid on a bike. These aren't like collector roadways. All the collector roadways are pretty much critical pedestrian routes. So they need a sidewalk on them. So um, that sort of takes care of, we don't, on these older neighborhoods. The idea is is don't build sidewalks to every house, to every door. Give it a break, go every couple of blocks and and you know, probably more than half of the streets will never have a sidewalk on them. This is a council choice, right? This is just something staff would be recommending um, that a lot of the houses are already built. And um, or the majority of some of these neighborhoods are built and there are no sidewalks today. So a policy discussion is, is maybe there's never sidewalks on some of those streets. But we do say which streets have a higher level of traffic. And that's where you sort of dump out onto it. So like Capitol Hill will be an example. Very difficult to build this improvement, by the way. But you could see um, going up San Joaquin Avenue and coming up Otter and getting a. Pedestrian sidewalk into that neighborhood for the future users. Um, I think would be a good priority. That's gonna be an expensive project though, because of the walls. And uh, ditches and and grading and that sort of thing. A- anything can be done, right? But it it'll be a little spending to get that one. But I I think, you know, and then as this neighborhood grows and maybe we bring in a little more U G A. We might be able to come around sort of the backside uh, and maybe get over um, over to uh, a Peacock Ridge sort of thing. And maybe get people out another way is another option there, right? Where you can't really get downtown from right there, but at least you can go recreate in another direction could be another option. But this is gonna get developed a little more. I'm probably gonna have just a study session on just this map, okay? And uh, what you think some of the priorities are, obviously give people a bigger piece of paper too. Get it to you a week before, maybe you can drive around with it a little bit and give me back your thoughts. But so the idea is, is get sidewalks to neighborhoods, but don't give a sidewalk to every single door. Cause there's so many houses that are built right now without sidewalks. I just don't know how beneficial that would be. And then if you were building an infill lot here and there and there, you would pay a sidewalk fee, okay? And that would go into the fund to help build this, uh, fund to help build some of this. It's never gonna fund this whole thing, but at least we have a priority map and we can start getting going. So the last thing on this is you want people to be able to go somewhere on the sidewalks. That could be downtown's important, um, libraries are important, schools are important, right? And um, there's parks are important. And so um, we wanna make sure these all point somewhere. And then also, if I go out, I'm a runner, I like to go out, I never like to go out and back, if you know what I mean? So if you're riding your bike, I like to go on a loop. So where are the three mile loops here, right? Two mile, six mile, half cutoffs. Um, the railroad trail um, coming up the middle, which isn't shown on here. Um, this was an older map, but that sort of bisects center of our community. It can be like a spoke, a central hub where we're wrapping in loops of people. So more to come on on this map, okay?
So Jay, you do uh, sidewalk up on Capitol Hill along San Joaquin. There's gonna have to be retaining wall on that, and that's even a bigger event.
It's a big expense to get a sidewalk up there. We need to evaluate the cost versus the benefits, some something like that.
And Jay, how is this um, done tell with the safe routes to schools and some of the other programs that we've been working on? Upgrading pedestrian safety in those school areas.
That does, that does. I mean, the primary is to get kids to school safely. It's a good source of funding too, right? That um, most of those are a hundred percent grant funded. So some of those, we can start saying, hey, you know, this is a safe routes to school grant application. Um, in Oregon, I applied ten times and never got one, okay? Here. The state of Washington does a better job funding in improvement projects. And so um, safety project especially, so um, a much better climate here, right? Now, to be able to do projects, you have to have people in an engineering division, okay? You're looking at a good part of the engineering division right here, right? So um, you know, I've moved over and uh, so we need people, um, engineers are hard to find right now. Um, I don't know, people who are in the business know that uh, it's very hard to find. Any staff member is hard to find, right? But uh, civil engineers are difficult right now. So with pile of projects, we need to be cognizant of the workload. Okay, you guys ready?
I've got one, one more question, one more question. So if we do a safe route to school at say, up Capitol Hill. Wouldn't we, don't we wanna save those safe routes to school closer to the schools? I mean, up Capitol Hill, the long ways for somebody to.
Correct, the school bus goes up there already. I'm assuming kids aren't walking out of that neighborhood. So it probably wouldn't be eligible for a safe routes to school project.
Okay.
Yeah. So infill lot standards, okay? So this is singular lots are coming in, okay? So these are just single parcel sites. I was trying to be clear here. So the last study session, you guys appeared that. The definition of an infill lot is a single undeveloped existing lot of record. That one home can be built and you can't divide it, partition it, nothing like that. I just wanna go build a house on a lot that I own, okay? So down here, I got that little picture and um, it's at Washington and H H Street. And you can see that it has pavement twenty feet wide on Washington and also on H. And it has a gravel alley in the backyard, okay? You can see uh, there's an existing sidewalk across the street there at the top of the picture. That's that sidewalk that is the definition of a sidewalk to nowhere. I mean, there's nobody around there, right? So um, so then you could see down to the south of this person. This is the trailer swimming pool. I don't think there's a house there, okay? I think if you move that out of there, there's a second house and most likely you can go on there. And then, so they're pretty much developed around them though. So this is a singular lot. So um, you go down to the bottom here and like, there's a little picture on the right there that shows what their frontage improvement looks like. You got paving and you got a gravel shoulder there for parking. So in in the residential zone only, infill lot standards, I'm down the bottom left there. You ask a couple of questions. Do sidewalks, existing sidewalks above the site? And is the site on a critical pedestrian route? Okay, that's that previous map that I showed you. So on number one, if there's a sidewalk abutting in the site, you construct a sidewalk along the front edge. If you're connecting, if your neighbor has a sidewalk, I think you build a sidewalk. In this essence, there isn't much around, right? They wouldn't build a sidewalk. So um. And then if it's on a critical pedestrian route, you'd construct the sidewalk on the critical pedestrian route, okay? So I am undeveloped lots on a critical route, you're building that walk. You're also building extending a walk if one is stubbed to you, right? But other than that, if there's a node to number one and number two, this is the matrix, this is in a. Graphical form, if you know what I mean. It's gonna not be as clunky, right? I didn't have enough room to draw the little flowchart or also. So um, if it's a no to number one and number two, you pay the sidewalk frontage improvement charge, it'd be in the master fee schedule. We already have a frontage improvement charge standard in in our code, right? We just don't have any rates put in there, but we put that into the master fee schedule. And then that fee collected would be just used on critical pedestrian routes. And we would pick a priority and start developing that priority. And uh, what I like though, safer routes to school and a little bit of funding um, for some fee in lieu of, could be some matching money. And maybe we use some transportation benefit district dollars for some of it too. And so it just gives us another pot of money to maybe go complete some of these uh, priority projects on the critical pedestrian routes. Okay, so that was for sidewalks, okay? I kept it different from the street standards. These are two different subjects in my mind, okay? I know it's a little hard to get your handle around, but I decided if I tried to meld the two of them together, the discussion gets pretty hairy. So I just took sidewalks on the left. So I just took sidewalks on the left, streets are on the right. Okay, there's varied site conditions up above, right? I mean, we all can see that. Uh you got a gravel alley in the back, you got gravel shoulders, that sort of thing. So um I mean, on any site, we need to say, what's the frontage road? Is it paved? Is it gravel? Does the road even exist? Um is the primary road though that they're driving in and out of, is it twenty foot wide? And it's a slope under ten percent. That's fire code stuff, that's fire life safety, right? That they need the fire department needs twenty foot of gravel roadway. Or paved if it's greater than ten percent, okay? That's their policy today. Minimum, yep. And so that's that's like uh. You can't allow a guy to go build and put a little cow trail to his house. We can't get a fire truck in there, right? So uh that's important. So um then what's happening for the parking along the site? Is it gravel? Is there anything there? Is it paved? Um and then what's happening with the alley in the back? I would say fifty percent of the lots on these old plats have alleys, right? And we gotta figure out what we're doing on the alley. Are people using it or there are monster trees back there, right? So um potential standards. So um and this would apply to the picture up in the upper left there. You have to widen, you'd widen the existing gravel access road to twenty foot along the frontage per fire code. And you pay a pavement frontage improvement charge in the master fee schedule. So I'm saying you put in the base improvement, which is uh and this sort of here in this case. And um if you're not putting in curb or sidewalk or any of that, you would pay a frontage improvement charge. And I'm not making statements here, I'm just giving potential options, if you know what I mean. You guys need to figure out what the menu looks like, right? So um. The second standard would just be you just widen the existing paved road to twenty foot and width along the frontage. And you pay no fee in lieu of, you don't do anything, you just get the road to twenty feet, right? So there's another potential standard is that parking strip in front of your house, okay? If you have, like in this instance, you have a paved road and it's a mishmash when you drive this neighborhood. There's quite a few people that have paid parking strips, right? Are we okay with having a roadway with gravel parking strips in the future for a brand new house, right? So if you build on that lot. Would we have them pave their parking strip or just keep the gravel tuned up for eternity, right? Um a bunch of his neighbors have gravel parking strips, right? A bunch of his neighbors have paved them over the years. I'm assuming people are paving their own parking strips. Cause the city typically isn't aware they're doing that. Um we're not putting a lot of gravel down on these either. They're the property owner's responsibility, right? We're on just the street part of the roadway. So um we need to to figure out what we do here. And this is just for that singer lot, right? This is all we're talking about here. So um what do you do on the alley back there? Um is it pavement? Is it gravel? Right now, it's a gravel alley. Um you know, I'm suggesting that if it's a gravel alley, it needs to be ten foot wide. And the gravel, you know, they put new gravel in, they put in a ten foot wide gravel alley. This is just for the one infill lot. If the neighbors are using it, it just gets improved with some gravel, right? Make it a little better, right? So um any roadway improvements you put in, they're probably minor in this essence. You're gonna have to put in some storm range improvements usually, right? That sort of comes with the territory. Um not likely, but you might have to dedicate some right of way, right? That it's most of these old plats have all the right of way dedicated, all the alleys dedicated. There's gonna be instances where we're gonna need additional right of way dedicated. You know, one out of a couple hundred, you know, sort of applicants are gonna come in. I'm trying to set the menu to try to apply to to most developments, right? And then um you pay a traffic impact fee for that new house on the new lot. The current standard in the traffic impact fee section, um if you're a lot that was created before nineteen thirty eight. The traffic impact fee is waived, but it says you construct all frontage improvements, okay? So. You have big subdivisions that are putting in full frontage improvements, okay? And people are buying those houses, okay? There's a model there, there. It's well, can be proven soon, right? If we get some water and whatever, it's coming soon. But also, I mean, we need to make sure there's some sort of equity here, right? I don't wanna blow the bank of some of these people. But you know, the developers are putting in huge street improvements, you know? And it's likely we should either require a fee in lieu of of some sort or some sort of improvement. Um that they could put in, in in my estimation as as staff, rather than this particular one. You can say, go build a house, right? You have to build some gravel parking and have a good day, right? So um that's sort of the menu of choices here. So I need to sort of dial this one in before I go to the next one.
Hmm, I have a really simple question for that though. Um let's say there's already a sidewalk and it's the house, maybe it was there eighty years ago, it's not now. So if they go to build on that lot and there's already a sidewalk, are they done? It's already there?
Yeah, if the sidewalk was already there and it it would meet standard, right? It can't be all topsy turvy and cracked and all that, right? That um they would have to make sure, they might be doing, it looked grinding out or something or.
But they wouldn't have to pay the fee for it.
They would not pay a fee if the sidewalk existed. That's correct.
So that's a corner lot.
Yes, I chose sort of one that has numbers, triple frontage in this case, right?
So that included the ADA accessible ramps and everything in the corner for sidewalks.
If you put a sidewalk in with a half street improvement. Um was a lot of uh cities would say, you're putting in curb and sidewalk all the way around, you put in an ADA round.
Yeah.
Uh you'd, in this instance, you'd probably want to cross because there's a sidewalk over there that doesn't look like anywhere, but. Yeah, you gotta lead them to something. Now, if there's no sidewalk over there, you would end with just your round. So that would be the full improvement scenario. And then we can go from there down to a minimal improvement scenario, right? Or a fee in lieu of scenario.
First to the definition. Did we get that? Correct and everybody's there.
Yes.
Cause it does have the two or more undeveloped lots, so. Two lots next to this. Are both made to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did read through that part, I or I didn't read that part. Th- that's a really important point. So um if you're uh if your neighbors are undeveloped next door, you're putting in full street improvements. And the way this thinking goes is this, is most lots are like, these are like sixty feet wide. Well, if I have three lots, it's a hundred and eighty feet of roadway now that will have curb and sidewalk. And at least the adjacent property owners can get a hundred and eighty feet of benefit, right? So there's something to think about what size. Triggers. These street improvements. So even though they're sort of going in one at a time, right? There are three lots are undeveloped and you'd get a hundred and eighty feet of street in that instance. Anything less than that? If it's just two lots or one lot, you would pay some sort of fee in lieu of or do something different, right?
And that was just a number that we there. For like nine hundred eighty feet, I mean, you go to three, whatever, you know? It's just sometimes we have to transition from infill to infill development.
I think three is reasonable for a smaller infill and then development should be four or more. I think that's reasonable number.
Is that what you were suggesting?
Yeah, that's what we were suggesting, that we thought that, you know, the three people that could all be. That would correct, yeah, he would have three lots, they could build houses all at different times. Or there could be one person that owns all of them, right? That they would go ahead, but like up on uh First Street, for example, um is Dave Killarney, right? Owns those, he owns a whole bank of lots, or all, there's no houses on any of them. Um this would apply that each lot that he does, there's vacant lots next to him. He's he's still on a half street improvement for half of First Street or a whole block of First Street in that instance. So it does allow us to set a standard, right? And um so at a minimum, you would have three. Now the lots could be a little narrower, some of those older plats, there's some thirty foot, yeah, there's some thirty foot lots. So it might get down to ninety feet of frontage with these smaller lots, right?
So the first house would trigger, in that case, would trigger the whole street?
Yeah, cause how's that work if we're doing it different times? We have two unsold lots. I buy this third one, I have to put in streets. Well, now there's not three lots. It would just apply to the others and. Correct, if your contiguous do the improvement, therefore you got to extend the improvement. Five years down the road, ten years down the road. Yeah. I mean, we're just. I'm just wondering how we're tracking.
So are we grandfathering it in from this?
They would have a sidewalk, yours would have a sidewalk next to it, okay, so in the. In the matrix down here, so there's the sidewalk exists next to the site.
Okay. No, I'm saying, okay, then if I was the third house, it wouldn't be next to mine. Yeah, we're gonna need to work that out on the matrix. That's something in the matrix that needs to get worked out, because what he's saying is you're on the far end, you build a house there. You stub a sidewalk to the street to the center guy, but then the third house over there, you know, and there's a gap, right? Well, he doesn't have to build one out for the standard, because there isn't two lots. We need to get that worked out on the matrix.
No, I was, my question was that the gentleman you said owns a whole block. So there's a first house, he builds one house or sells that lot to one person. Does that trigger that first sidewalk or that whole block?
Little areas developable.
Just in the front. Some of the people don't normally, he might sell those lots one by one. You know, so a lot.
Developed or undeveloped, I guess.
What's that?
Developed, right? With a house on them?
No.
That's what triggers it. Oh, but no, the lot isn't triggered.
No, 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 I'm saying he sells one lot to somebody who says, I like that location, I'm gonna buy that lot, and he builds a house there. And there's ten lots on that street.
But they're buildable.
So does that, does that first house build a sidewalk?
Yes, yes, it triggers it.
Because.
Under this.
Cause eventually you'll have consecutive houses. Potentially, right?
Yeah. How many lots was that?
Six conventional block, sixteen lots, I think, on that block, it's convention block, I think, eight, eight lots on each side of the um.
Block, I mean that, I mean. That makes sense.
But he's not a new subdivision. If you're dealing with sixteen lot subdivision, you're putting in full street improvements. If you have sixteen undeveloped lots, you're putting in full street improvements, the same thing, right?
These are platted lots.
There's already platted, that's really the only difference.
Trying to figure that number out to say. So it doesn't define as infill lot. It's infill development, that type of thing.
I mean. On the infills to me is is the is the missing, the missing house, that's and then no sidewalks on either side of it, that is the infill to me. And you know, is it gonna be, we want those lots built on, right? So we wanna make it so they can build, either make a profit or something, can actually afford to build a house. And not put in a thirty thousand dollar sidewalk, and there's never gonna be a sidewalk to the left or the right. That is what I consider infill. Now, if there's a street with sixteen lots on it, yeah, of course. You know, I think somebody should should make those improvements. I'm just talking about that single lot. Where there's no, no left, no right, that just, we got some of those around town where there's where there's a sidewalk.
And that's, that's the difficult thing coming with the standard, because we have so many different instances around town and so many variations. And you're exactly right, I think it was easy just to look at it and say. Okay, sidewalk, no sidewalk, street, no street, that'd be great, but we can't leave it up to staff to interpret that.
No, that's where it's been.
We need certainty, exactly right, we need certainty for the people coming in this building, following us, coming across the counter. We need certainty for our staff too. This staff aren't gonna be here forever.
Yeah.
Right, so, so it's really important that we build that here.
So. Let's say we have a house on Mount B, Washington, Jefferson, there's no sidewalks anywhere. So, nice little couple bought their house in nineteen forty two, they live there, the house burns down. Insurance is gonna rebuild that house, is insurance gonna pay for that one piece of sidewalk? You know, that, so how would that work?
That's actually on the last page of that, it's under redevelopment. We have not to that yet, but we need to talk about when a house is a replacement structure or an addition. How do we deal with that? That's the third part of this presentation.
Somebody's replacing it because they've got, you know, pockets, they want a better house, that's one thing, but I'm talking about, you know, if somebody owns a house and they have insurance, insurance. Are they gonna pay for that sidewalk?
Cause that, again, we don't want this to be an arbitrary decision, right? So. We need to have a standard that fits. For the developer, the property owners will see at the same time, we can't make that arbitrary decision when they come across the counter.
It's just, you know, I don't know. Insurance, we're covered that or not.
I don't feel like they were ensuring it before though.
Right.
So they're they're only covering what you insured.
Correct, insurance doesn't cover in replacement, that's the next thing.
So, reading we selected or you're recommending adjacent to two or more undeveloped, basically that's your neighbor on others, either side. Initially, I was thinking, okay, plus three, because then that's half a block, right? But this is just looking at, there's no one developed on either side of you. This is now, that's what triggers the next step, yes, is that kind of.
That's correct, and we thought the improvement was long enough then that three property owners can benefit. If nobody ever connected to it, at least there's paid parking in front of your houses. And there's a sidewalk that people can recreate a little bit on and that sort of thing. So you would get benefit from that improvement in front of the house. I know when I had kids growing up, they were out in front of our house all the time with chalk and stuff and whatever. And they'd go down the street quite a ways, but we just thought three lots seemed somewhat reasonable. You know, maybe if it never gets connected to, at least those three property owners can enjoy, you know, a frontage, so.
Can we, did we get to streets at all though? I think we just talked about sidewalks, if we can. Talk about the street here, please, I'm sorry. Um but at least, you know, we need to develop consensus here, right? Second, third meeting, maybe we get some more consensus, we can winnow this presentation down.
And I'll actually bring me back some code in the next meeting for you to look at more with some flowcharts and that sort of thing.
So obviously A two G are potential standards. Um the dedication additional right of way can be a safety issue, right, can be fire code. Um because if if our right of ways are too narrow, at this point, we may be required an additional right of way to meet fire code. Uh meet parking standards, whatever might be applied, so I think that's.
So what are the standards that would? Require an additional right of way? It sounds like most properties, that's not good, but. It's only going to be if if there's something existing within our code that we need safety access to widen that.
Residential zone, there's one of the actually just came in.
Twenty foot right of ways, maybe?
It's a piece of university.
And university is a major collector someday, when that whole neighborhood, those are all platted lots, but there's hardly any development on any of them. And so that, you come in for a single family home permit and then pop your house right in the middle of a major collector roadway, right? So there's a problem there, so we're saying if if you wanna build a house, that's great, but in some instances, you might have to dedicate some right away.
Well, you definitely gotta do something on Puget Street, because in two thousand fifteen, I spent a lot of time up there with neighbors and. And I worked with staff too, and basically staff said, I mean, yeah, we could put a street here one day, these people are gonna lose their yards on both sides.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, that's a narrow, a narrow gravel road and there's people who got beautiful trees on and and all kinds of stuff. And they're gonna lose their, lose their yards.
And we may have the right of way there that those are in.
Yeah.
It's likely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, and they quit actually, they found that out, they quit actually complaining about it, that's.
But yeah, so it's it's rare, but it may be needed to, you need to ask for some right of way, even to get a sixty foot.
Cause we were going to reduce uh easements, right? Well, Jeff was talking about that.
Well, on on neighborhood residential, certainly a lot of the, especially now, you were sixty foot right of ways, it was platted at the time, those aren't necessary. Now we're talking about thirty two feet, but if you start talking about arterials and collectors.
Right.
And to go back to that thirty two. Why would we wanna go that small? I know we wanna slow traffic, but that seems if cars have to pull over to the side, it just seems like.
Actually, residential, really, you don't ever. Um there's, uh, next time you're gonna live here or something, bring your teammates with you. But you'll sort of see what I mean, that it just would work, they work, cause a lot of times there's cars on one side and maybe not on the other. And then you got the driveways you can sneak over into, and it's usually if you have a huge suburban and the Amazon trucks going the other way. You might just eke over a little bit while someone shot by, then you continue, but it's just rare. You might just eke over a little bit while someone shot by, then you continue, but it's just rare. Um, I've lived in a neighborhood like that for twenty years, and it's just, just part of how you drive those neighborhoods. Very common to have thirty-two foot wide streets, so.
Brings traffic speeds down to, you know, fifteen or so, right?
So.
And we have, but thirty-four also is an option too.
It's more to maintain, more expensive to construct, and it's more to maintain long term for the city, you have more, uh, you have more stormwater enough to, uh, send more payment to maintain long terms.
I just think as long as it's safe for the fire trucks and emergency vehicles to get down, then it's fair. And as far as the infill lot, street standards that are listed here, it seems to me like this is pretty well geared towards matching up to what's existing in the neighborhood, which seems entirely reasonable. Right. I mean, of course, we don't wanna add additional unnecessary regulation and burden, but if we're looking at kind of meeting what the neighborhood has and making sure that we're meeting our safety requirements and that everyone's accessible, this seems reasonable to me.
So I think we got the sidewalk part figured out, so let's uh, go up the, the ladder here. Let's say that infill lot does not have any street in front of it, what are they gonna do? Uh, I'm just saying, there is no pavement at all, it's dirt, dirt, trees.
Unopened.
It's unopened right away, yeah?
Are you talking about Bird Street there?
Yeah, I'm just talking one, one house here, I'm not talking any multiples, this is the true infill scenario.
Situation.
Do they meet fire code? Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So that makes sense, that's twenty feet, okay? Do you want twenty feet of pavement or twenty feet of gravel? Is it this less than ten percent? The fire code, the fire marshal might allow gravel.
I think same with like the sidewalks, if it's a piece of street to nowhere, like where are we gonna have them do just in front of their house? Cause like up on Puget there, you know, you buy a new house and you're, you're doing just a half and s- street improvement in front of your place. If, if it was that, I would go with gravel. But.
Now, the next person to you though, this street's gonna leapfrog along, so we're in perpetuating gravel roadways at that point, so.
Yeah.
No, but this is an undeveloped street, it's an infill lot on a street, the street does not exist, okay?
It's a dirt pathway.
It's a dirt pathway, we got quite a few of those tracks, literally building, so take this other one, what are they gonna be your face?
Yeah.
So, you're looking at the one on Fur here? Is that the one you're?
Brent, Brent's talking about on, on sheet seven, upper left, this is the next slide. If you wanna go, you're done. Correct, where you're in the middle of a neighborhood, so you have a, like, Bird Street there is completely unimproved. Somebody says, hey, I wanna build that house over there, right? So in the, in the standard that we just came up with though, that, um, you would be good, because you have two lots adjacent to you, okay? So full street standards would apply in this, this instance, on that particular one.
I need to keep it, are you talking about Bird Street?
Yeah, Bird, Bird Street, and the, in, in the example, you go to full street improvements with. But in the instance where there weren't multiple lots, it's a lot, this is there. Do we have to, we, we know we need to meet fire code. Do we allow just gravel, or do we want to pave it?
And there's twelve, there's, there's twelve lots here.
But no, let's just, let's go with single lot.
Just a hypothetical of a single lot, there's, they're on their own and the street is not open, right? It's, they gotta build fifty feet of street, we know it has to be twenty feet wide by the fire code, okay? And it has to support the seventy-five thousand pound vehicle, which is quite a bit of gravel. Um, you know, paving it helps reduce the amount of gravel, so. There's completely no road, there's gonna be instances that we get into that, where you have a single lot. They need to build a roadway, they're not a development, you know, there's not three, maybe there's only two lots, there's not three, right?
When, when do you wanna see, put in, say, third one down? What are they building from? Standarm key or the top?
Well, ideal thought would be blacked off it, you know, have her, but if it's not a street, then the next one is gravel it, just.
Correct, but we're perpetuating, I'm, this is okay with council.
That's.
That, that's the policy I'm looking for, if, if council, if there's concurrence with council, right?
Project, and I would be leaning towards paved per. And whatever, up until, if they're on the unimproved right away, they gotta improve it to roughly the site location. From, and in this case, it's just paved, paved it through.
So let's say.
And unfortunately, in this case, sorry, it's, it's just, it sucks, cause it's gonna be expensive, and we shouldn't be allowing this to happen anymore. So this doesn't happen seventy-five years again, so, um, so when we do this, at some point too, um, why aren't we looking at, uh, you know, funding larger projects to pave through these situations? Cause obviously, in this particular situation, this doesn't make a lot of sense. The reason, probably the reason why there's, hasn't been development is because of some of these improvement costs.
Correct.
Right, so if, uh, if we're not, if we're gonna ignore it and let it go, um, the developer's not gonna develop it, it's gonna stay a patch of scotch room. Um, in perpetuity, right, so I'm, I'm kinda fifty fifty on it, but I don't, I'm code wise, no, I, I'm not supportive of leaving gravel roads, stay gravel roads, um, we're gonna be under the gun regardless anyways, and probably five to ten years to deal with dust control and environmental hazards related to that, we're probably gonna be forced to pave them anyways, so we probably should start looking at bundling some projects together. Um, when we do improvements on, you know, Beaver Street or something like that down the road, you should probably be looking at the lateral streets that connect to it that are unimproved and improving them.
Could we do something like in twenty twenty-nine, all streets have to be paved? You know, and then give that six year window, where like, you gotta develop now, cause of twenty thirty, and it's gotta be paved. So in six years, we have incentive to get this developed.
And there's quite, there's a few roads up on Capitol Hill that this way and they're dirt, and they're a mess in the winter time, getting up and down.
They're steep and they're, they're a little hazardous, so, um.
But in lieu of those costs, I mean, why couldn't the developer pave the unimproved Birch Street themselves?
And this, if there's more than one lot, sure, there's three lots, yes, they're, they're leaving the whole street, we decided on that. But if it's just a singular lot or two, there's an open right away, we know we need to be twenty feet wide. Are we okay with twenty feet of paved? We've already dealt with the sidewalk situation.
Yeah, I wanna modernize, and I wanna make sure that we have the infrastructure for the future and not the infrastructure for fifty years ago. So, um, I'm with Jay and Joe, we need to pave as much as possible, but at the same time, we, if we can do a quick incentive and develop this cause we, these are undeveloped because of all these, probably all these restrictions we've been putting, so. Um, is it possible to do? But like, you gotta do it by X amount of, X amount of years, or in twenty, this kicks in and we have very strict coded, everything's gotta be paid, can we do something like that? Or is that?
That means centralized development out with gravel road.
Yeah, and then.
Our, our maintenance costs for gravel roads are extensive.
Yeah.
You guys know that, like, payments a lot easier for us, okay?
But we can kick the can down the road for twenty twenty-nine.
Sooner than you know.
It was, it's just the examples.
So, let's say, with what we're talking about here, we're looking at the picture on the left, the grid.
Yeah.
So on Burt Street, say the third one over, somebody buys that one, they wanna develop their house on that one, so they're basically center of that. So are we saying, sorry, we saying that they need to pave from, what is Beaver here, to their lot and not beyond? Or if there's another adjoining road on the other side, which I don't see, so I don't know, um, do they have to do the whole thing?
You have to pave the road to the nearest fire access road, we just said you had need fire requirements, right? And so you would pave to the nearest fire road, then that fire.
So in this one would be Beaver Street, you wouldn't have to go all the way, you would just have to go to your lot from Beaver Street.
That's correct.
Thank you for explaining that.
Where my challenge comes in is bouncing back and forth between the hats, cause of course, as a developer, who wants to take that cost on? It makes, it makes a singular home project there, it, it's an undoable project, cause you're adding, you're adding my profit to the road. But I don't get to recoup, I don't get more for that home, cause it's on dirt, or if it's on a, you know, I might, it might sell faster, but I don't get a higher appraisal. Like, I'm gonna sell it for what it's gonna sell for, but of course, as a citizen, I want sidewalks everywhere, I want streets everywhere, I walk all over town.
Correct, so when you walk in and you ask staff, what do I need to do here, I'm thinking about buying this, I can fricking give you an answer, and you could not buy that.
I can't, I can't tell you what to do there, right?
No, no, and, and, and that is, that's a huge problem, cause I, we, we run it through often, and it's like, what do we do?
The reason why a lot of cities just said, build it all everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, as much as I don't like it. Yeah, but I mean, sucks, but it.
I've got bongers right here. It's, this is it, that's, that's it, for infill development, it's for street centers, it's pretty simple. Um, we're not going this direction.
No.
As we speak.
Ever, okay, the twenty's a good compromise.
We're getting more complex, which is fine, right? So we can get back to that, so we just got through, is everyone okay, undeveloped right away, these are only one or two lots. They're building a, a fire road that's paved to get to the nearest fire road, yes.
Well, they're not, they're not, I mean, we could do that, they're not gonna build, one, one house is they're gonna pay for the road all the way down to Beaver Street.
I don't know, maybe, maybe, maybe it's not this lot, maybe that spot has.
Because these lots were sold individually, you know, to.
I still think that's all.
People, and the guy who buys the one in the middle. Thinking he's gonna build his house.
In this instance, they're all a common owner.
Yeah, but he could sell all those house, right, those lots differently.
About the development potential there, right?
Right, well, and then another thing is, if you're looking at back grid again, we're looking at bottom left, number one, I kinda wish these were labeled like Battleship. Anyways, so Beaver Street on the bottom left, okay, so the, the person builds there, and so they bring the road to them. And then the next person builds, and they bring the road to them.
It's hopscotch it along, yeah.
But as long as the improvements continue.
Correct, it's just like extension of sewer or water, it's a logical extension of utility and roadways, and over time it happens.
Okay.
I'm writing heavier to certainty, so.
Maybe to certainty.
Heavy to certainty.
Okay, so then the next one would be, um, it's gravel now, okay? You have one lot on a gravel road, you wanna go build a house. Okay, we said that you need need fire code, okay, this, this twenty feet. But there's a bunch of other houses on this gravel road already, right? And so, um, what do we do for the, the pavement? Do we make sure you need fire code, which would be twenty feet of gravel? Um, are we okay with that?
Jim was talking about Puget.
Yeah.
Single house.
In that case, I think, I mean, yeah, I think it needs to match up with the neighborhood, and it does make sense for us to put in a little bit there, because that's something that we're gonna have to go in and eventually upgrade that roadway, so I would lean towards keeping that like to the, the neighboring parcels.
Okay, do you want to see a fee in lieu of paving charts to that lot? Just, it's in, we put it in a schedule, right? Um, the guy that is on the undeveloped right away is digging it out, putting in base rock and, and paving it, right? You just have to pave gravel, which you just, you dress it up, you put down some more rock, you grade it out. And, and you pave it, the cost is significantly less to overlay the gravel road. Is there a deal in lieu of for that singular house, does he pay anything for the paving, a paving fee? It's, it's in the menu, I'm just throwing it out.
On, on this situation, sure, absolutely, on this situation with all these lots, absolutely.
But we need to make it universal, we can't make it, every one of these can't be.
I, I'm not considering that these, these are an infill, so.
No, no, you get correct, I'm, go back to page six, we're talking page six only here. I'm giving you permutations of pages there, we jumped off to there as another example, but, um, on page six, you're one lot. Maybe two at the most, you're not three, as we already talked about, right? So you're one to two undeveloped lots, you're infilling, I'm on a gravel street, okay? What am I doing here on the pavement? Uh, the, we need to be twenty feet wide, we already know that, we need fire code, a gravel road twenty feet wide works. Do you wanna have them pave that? Or do you want to have them pay a fee in lieu of paving? There are other houses down the street that are using the same gravel road today, right?
I would rather the fee, because, uh, the project should be looked at more systematically and not looked at individually. So they need to pay into the system, um, and we need to adequately plan that out and, uh, and draw from that, and, and, yeah, we need to do these as larger projects and not one at a time, if I didn't prove it, I.
And there's a maintenance benefit to that too, I don't like maintaining gravel roads, but it's very hard if you have quilted pavement. Or one guy's paved, the next guy's not, whatever, how do I take the grader down there and grade that problem? Okay.
Yeah. So, okay. Trying to see if we got, just so I can make notes.
Okay, now, if they're adjacent to a paved street, do I start paving up? Right? So that's a permutation of that, that is paved right here, if you pave your front, it's just like I made the other guy.
Eight streets paved, Washington's not the crack one or lot.
And so that starts bringing the pavement to other people.
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a distance that we're, we're, we're willing to stay within on that though, I mean? I mean, what if, what if they're two hundred feet down that road adjacent to it?
Like connected to it, like.
Directly.
Eight streets paved on this, Washington's not near this corner lot.
Okay.
But the second lot in, say that one was making, it wouldn't, cause you're not.
Right, yeah.
And he's already in a gravel street that you wouldn't, but we could put a distance in there if council chose, said, you know, if you're a certain distance away, you'd pave to your house, we were just saying if you front, and you would, right?
Yeah, that connects, if it's adjacent to or need to connect them.
I like the fees a lot, I think the fees, cause when you're talking about just, s- s- just building a home for my family. And I'm putting in a high line home or something in town, to, to try to get a paving company, I have to try to pull some of these tax off. It's not normal, normal people aren't really ready to just, yeah, pave, pave my road. It's, it's hard for, for that kind of in- infrastructure stuff to get put in by just somebody who wants to build on an infill lot, yeah.
Okay, are we missing anything I'm asking?
Sorry. There's a lot to think about. This isn't just.
In, in the allure of fee. Need to make sure that that person building that house knows that we are not probably gonna put a street or sidewalk in front of their house, that that money will be used in a critical area, is it critical area? No, what, what, what do you use?
We've been using, even if via blue to just go whole, do a whole block somewhere, you know, Todd wrote we go there with the county paving machine or something, and we'll just go deal with some of these things in that way.
I remember a few years back that the traffic impact fees, people were kind of upset that they weren't using the impact fees in front of their business, so. You know, that's the, as long as we're clear, that this is going to pot, and we're gonna do what needs to be done first, and then second, then third.
They also have the choice of doing the improvement, so you can pay this fee, which is nominal, or you can do this.
That's actually, good point, if you wanna put the improvement in, but you're taking the pavement all the way down to the nearest being street.
Yeah.
I can't have a piece of gravel that I'm trying to maintain, the pavement. And it's dangerous, cause if you pull a gravel out on the more roadway surface.
And we, and we, and we, this is Lua, we shouldn't be doing any of that for big development though. No, they need to put it. I know, I know, but I just wanna be clear, I don't want somebody saying, oh, all of a sudden you guys do it later.
I think, did we get enough resolution there?
We'll have to look at it though, right?
That's correct, we'll go back with better stuff here, right? Uh, these were just trying to get the questions out, right? So on the next one, we've answered this question, okay? So infill development, these are platted lots, okay? These are more than three undeveloped, right? These are, um, the four and up. They, they build full street improvements.
Yeah.
You guys were okay with that.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so that's quick, we're gonna move on to number seven, if you guys are okay? And now this is the fun one. Actually, the first one was the fun one, the site redevelopment. So if you look, um, you see, uh, H Street and there's an alley. And, um, the civil lawner map that used to be there, um, they're no longer doing that, um, they're putting a restaurant in there, okay? So Brent and I started asking, okay, uh, are they ever gonna build anything for this commercial development? You know, frontage wise, should we have any standard there, okay? And then you go down to, um, Neelin and Front Street, we just paved that, and it was unreal that the, the Google machine or the, the street view came through, right? And so, uh, anyways, that's the new, this one looks like today, um. But, um, that's getting redeveloped, uh, the county's moving some of their services in there. And so, um, the question is, is what triggers them to do some roadway improvements? You know, as they redevelop, these are two commercial, okay? Question came up a while ago, residential, that's a different, different bag, right? Question came up a while ago, residential, that's a different, different bag, right? In a residential district, it might be something a little different than in commercial district, di- districts, right? But staff need to be given some guidance here, that if they're doing a huge building addition or remodel, or, you know, whatever it is. That we need some sort of thresholds, where, where street requirements click in, because right now we don't have any. You just keep building on these old facilities, and there are no standards, you just leave it the way it is, right?
That first picture where that laundry mat is, there's a restaurant going in there?
Yeah.
In the building, they didn't tear the building down.
No, they're building in there, and their parking's gonna be on the alley, and that meets their needs. And then they're gonna put a fence along each, each street, so people don't park there necessarily, they might parallel park, but there's no more no's in parking. So, um, anyways, the first question is, is should we have road and sidewalk standards for redevelopment sites?
Yeah.
And then you have commercial and industrial, and you have the residential zoning district, they're probably gonna be sort of different depending on what district you're in. So, this came out of our code, uh, the standards manual right now. That redevelopment is to conversion, structural alteration, relocation. Significant alteration or improvement, or enlargement of any structure, and or the addition of si- improvement of site features. That change the type or increases the intensity of the use of a site, okay? It's an okay definition, I'm, there's some things we would probably change with that, but that generally says, hey? If you're increasing square footage or your intensive use, which would usually be traffic related, you've gotta do something. So then we've set thresholds to those type of basic, uh, ideas, right? So potential thresholds down, uh, below, so if the onsite improvements, um, this would usually be the building improvements. It exceed fifty percent of the assessed value of the site improvements, um. You would have them consider street improvements, and that's very common. I don't know if Bothell had that, but I did see that in others, that, that improvement standard also is in the, uh, building code. As Sean follows that, that if you're going in, and if the building's worth X, and you're doing fifty percent of that value, you have. All sorts of requirements, sprinklers, little kitchen, modern, everything, ADA, the whole bit. So it's pretty common, uh, for building improvements to do that, um, do street standards apply in that instance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good, so that's pretty common with most others' codes, um.
Yes.
I heard three.
Uh, me also, nodding for.
What, sorry, what's the, um, Neeland in front, what is that project?
It's, uh, the county is putting their mortuary in there.
In storage, that's a major change for that facility, isn't it?
Oh, there is storage in the three big days, and then moving in.
There's, there's facilities department. As, as well as her corner.
So we should have really well paved roads that could support larger vehicles.
Well, they're already paved, we just did it.
Yeah.
They just stay out.
Sidewalk and vegetated spread, elimination, right?
Yeah.
So.
For modern improvements.
Yeah.
So does their use trigger their, they're not doing any improvements to exceed the fifty percent threshold?
Um, but the intensity and change of use, it's, it looks like derelict storage, and you said they're moving the facilities opposite. Their facilities, so they're gonna be coming and going all day long, it's business.
Yeah, and the prior user, though, was, what, what did he do there?
He was a bad case, yeah, so, yeah. Everything coming in with office.
He had things wrong, that use was in there forever.
We wanna connect our parks and everything and walkable areas, this should be, um, in that long range plan of a walkable, walkable area. Because if we wanna draw people downtown. You know, we need to have the standards where they're accessible and they're walkable, and, um, they connect to all, all the things they wanna do in the future, connecting all our parks and facilities together, that, that would be my standard.
Okay.
That it connects with our long-term vision of what we want is parks and walkability.
Because if it, if it stays basically the same thing with now improvement, who's gonna wanna walk?
Right.
That's, you know, that's it.
Who walks on French Street anyway?
Yeah.
I gotta go to Bob's Tavern, don't I?
Well, that's not on French Street.
It's just.
On the back way, so they don't stand it.
A lot of, a lot of walkers. Way, so we don't see where you go for lunch.
A lot of walkers are.
So, um, I mean, there's another thing, that's number two, that if you add a bunch of trips per day, that might click in a threshold, right? That would be, you know, you're not doing a ton of tenant improvements, but your change of use is a bunch more traffic, right? And so that might be a threshold.
But, you know, someday it might be used on residential for apartments, so we want, I want the highest standards put in there.
Yeah.
It's GC, it allows for, uh, residential above, above, second one above at this point.
I wanna be, I wanna be pushing that as the solution and not continuing to try to recycle off all, all derelicts, whatever.
Redevelopment.
Yeah, I, I wanna be, if there's a quote-unquote incentivizing anything, incentive is, um, if you're gonna go towards the residential retail route. Um, it's gonna be more feasible for your project, or.
Why don't we have an artist village here, you know?
But, I mean, I, we can't, we can't interfere with the private, the private, or, you know, whatever, but we do have a permitting component with, with the change of use.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and what we will allow and not allow, and in this particular area, it's just frustrating, um. Looking at the budget and everything else that's going on, and this is a loss for the city. It's a particular project, we'll lose.
Wonder why they're using this facility storage and not Olson County Public Works property out where they, they have a lot of land.
This is more their, their building.
Yeah. That's, yeah, understand, yeah.
Over there, I'm just.
The premium and everything else is just, uh. Yeah, okay.
But then if you go to the H Street and Alley, the whole restaurant there, um, full-fronted street improvements, um, you know, if we would have walked up and said, hey, you know, you're building. Alley improvements and a sidewalk and a curb and all that, um, it's likely that restaurant probably wouldn't move forward. No, I mean, there are thresholds, we just need to be cognizant of how the, and so when we come back to you, we'll have examples of.
Have they, have they submitted building? They've just been through pre-sub. Right? The restaurant, they've just been through pre-sub, right?
Uh, I think they got their lease. They went through, they had the, when their lease. Okay.
They have other landings.
Yeah.
Can, can we offer these businesses, so it's not such a big huge chunk of money to do it in phases? I don't know, that's a possibility. I'm, kinda as they get their money, they do another phase. Yeah, but just to say that business is gonna save its mess.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it presents some challenges as far as managing that too, right?
I mean, there, there, there is some language out there for historic buildings. Which I've, I've been trying to get information for about four or five years now, and still haven't gotten any. About some of the buildings downtown that don't get used because of a narrow staircase, or because, you know, um, the windows, or I don't know. But there is, there is some historic building codes in Washington State that does allow. You know.
You can alter the interior of a building, most of the store.
You can do them?
No, I'm, I'm saying.
Yeah, let's do circumvent life safety, because it's an old building.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Definitely.
Um. Okay, well, let's just tear it down now.
Well, that's, that's what we, that's what redevelopment is all about, you know, we don't have to tear it down, but we have to bring it up to a safe, a safety standard, yeah. I mean.
But if you got an empty building, it's an empty building, it's an empty building, it's gonna be a homeless encampment, or, uh, it's gonna be burnt down one day because somebody's sleeping in there and starting a fire, so we want them occupied. And if there's a way to occupy them, you know, with, with a tiered, okay, fine, you do the staircase, and this year, and you do this.
First point is, if they're occupied unsafe, then we're creating that situation where people are in trouble.
Aren't we talking about roads?
Yeah, the time, inferior historic building improvements is the subject.
Two really good examples right here, I mean, we're talking about a new startup restaurant, and we're talking about the county. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're talking about totally different pockets, we're talking about totally different uses. I mean, that there, this, this isn't, this isn't a one and done type thing, I know we all know this, it's just, because you start getting deep on this, you, you throw those out there, and then. We alienate half of these businesses that can't come, but we also need to improve. So where, 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 where is our balance, and that's, I know that's what we're trying to find, but it's not easy.
Well, and we can't say, well, they can afford it, so we're gonna make them do more.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, how do we do it in a way that's fair?
That's, that's fair and reasonable, and it, it. It encourages redevelopment, because you price things out, like I say, I mean, I don't mean to say it like in that way, but every place has a cap, because we're talking Bothell. I mean, they're in a different price point, so I mean, there's, your entry levels in the seven hundred thousand dollar range, so we're.
H and H Street Alley example, how, that's one, was that like one block in off of Olympic Highway?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it, is it, it used to be there?
Job used to be there.
Kind of like.
No, actually, it's behind, um, the subway and, what do you call it, Park Street Square.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Was the one.
So commercial residence, so that's interesting.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
Olympic Highway is interesting to me, because I'm thinking of the north end development in Olympic Highway basically looking like a Martin Way.
That's LIC.
And I'm, I don't want that.
Intensity commercials on.
Yeah, like you're gonna have, you got the trailer park, and then you got.
Correct.
A bunch of commercial with fifty-five driveways and accesses, and then you've got a neighborhood residence on an alleyway, it's just kind of a. Yeah.
Ultimately, yes, that's, that's.
And it's gonna be busy, it's going to get ten times.
Turn lanes and lots of accidents.
Yeah, big white.
Yeah. Five lane highway.
Yeah.
Forty miles an hour, too fast.
With our cop line, um, how that co- we're, we developed, we imagine, that service better.
Yeah, that was kind of. That, that particular, so getting back to several slides ago, you had a map of critical pedestrian routes. And you kind of said, you know, at some point, we just have to make the decision, we're just not gonna ever have sidewalks here, we're just not gonna ever have certain improvements in this particular area. I kind of liken the idea of the.
Well, that one.
Of identifying, yeah, I'm just saying, like, I like the idea of identifying areas where we're gonna say, like, it's just, this just doesn't apply. Right, that this particular infill does not apply.
Forward, whether it be.
We're not gonna do it, it's never gonna happen, you can remodel your house, don't worry about putting in sidewalks, or don't worry about doing that, I'd like to just take those off the, the table altogether. Right, like, just whatever those are, whatever those areas of the city are, that you guys feel like, just, uh, not peaceful, right? Then we can take that off the list, and then focus on. Where those, the redevelopment areas need to be, and we put that together as a project, those redevelopment area projects. And I would say Olympic Highway would be two blocks in on Olympic Highway, similar to Railroad, Franklin Code, or whatever, we kind of got, like. This area where we're trying to focus a project on that, and, and then we're gonna, we're, we're gonna do some development, we're gonna do some, um, improvements. Um, as, as a larger project, and, and again, depending on other projects that come into that area. Um, I'm a fan of leveraging, leveraging other growth, if we can, to, to do that, but, um.
So you're suggesting, you know, almost that we just made this.
Yeah, for streets.
More extensive map, well, no, this pedestrian map, and you say, if you're on the map, you build a sidewalk, if you're not, you don't.
Basically.
I would teach it, it's where I suppose.
That was, so we'll be very specific about good advice, still, and not.
That's the tough part, right?
Yeah.
Because you may not capture every instance.
Yeah.
You might have grades that are different, you might have, uh, you know, size of lots, whatever.
There could be a house built right up to the edge of pavement, there's no way a sidewalk, we need to drive every one of them and, and look at things, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta have some, some options there, like you're saying, since.
Well, I, I mean, are you talking more like the whole mountain area, all those side streets, there's no sidewalks, you know, all King Street, and all those streets, there's. Is that, is that kind of what you're talking about?
Sidewalks and.
No, well, I'm.
Eric says, what's built out there is what's going to be built out there.
There, I mean, there, there's probably no infill lots there, unless the house burns down. Yeah, there's, but like areas like that, you're, you're never gonna have.
And that's. And, and that's where we would come to the table with the safe route, because that mountain, right, that would make absolute sense for safe routes to schools, right, or.
Uh, the gesture row would already show those projects on it, but if you're not on that row.
Talking the, the Capitol Hill example, some of the commercial examples, um, you know, there's some areas where it's just like. Do we really want commercial at the corner of H in the alley, like, is that really what the residential neighborhood wants in there? You know, I don't know, you know.
It's a bridge zone, right? So it's, it's, it's the commercial, so it goes from our general commercial, more intent of use, yes, to that bridge zone, to the, to the neighborhood residential. Yeah, it's, it's probably out of date, right, it needs some updating there, um, what, how that transition occurs from you busy general commercial, that residential.
So the neighborhood restaurant right there would be awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that community could support it, there's not a lot up there, I mean, you've got two breakfast spots and fast food. I mean, I, that, that's the thing, though, is you're starting to get into the particulars, I mean, it was, it was a laundry mat, which I'm sure served some of the community as well. Especially the, the, the large trailer park that's right there.
There's a park, it's not your park.
Yeah, I.
I know we got into specifics a little bit, specific projects, um, I know these are good examples, but they're, 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 they're not what we wanna focus on, we wanna focus on, right? The, the, the concept of the lot itself, and the specific project.
You gave us good threshold options, I mean, a, and, and any of those is a pretty good option.
So I, I do, I think we have enough to come back with some specific items that we can consider here, draft of code, right? And then I will give you more pictures, how does that code apply to that, and that, and that? I mean, we could sit there and look at the code and do a little bit more yes, no, add one more of these, and, and I think probably be able then to bring standards for adoption. So it seems like we've got pretty good consensus on redevelopment, everyone's okay with some standards, we'll get back to you on what they are, what the thresholds are, the exact thresholds. It appears that the fifty percent standard sounded pretty good, you know, that's what, you know, we're already using in the building code. We might have a few others, like a trip generation, that sort of thing.
Are, are we saying there, so if that it's valued at five hundred thousand, if they spent two hundred fifty thousand dollars in, that's what kicks that in trigger?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a couple of ones. You do, Sam.
And what, what we've done is, since with, with building permits, is typically, it's, it's an estimate, so you take the assessed value, right? And then it's an estimate of, of, of structure only, not property, right? And then what the contractor bid might be, or an estimate from whoever's doing work, um.
Because I know when I, when I opened up Shelton, Texas, uh, up on Olympic Highway, I was, I had to put in that, I paved the alley. And that wasn't expected, so we, we still have that code.
Alley paving the LIC and GC?
Yeah, next, I.
Was, was the trigger because of the fifty percent?
There was, there was, there was a trailer there, got rid of it, built that little, that little store.
Okay, well, yeah.
Yeah, it would have been a little bit bigger, but takes it all the way around it.
Consider new construction, I think that is the general commercial LIC. Right now, standards.
That, you're staying up on.
That was my first store.
On Mountain View.
Where that con- contractor ran off, and we had to pay subcontractors twice.
Oh.
So that, that, that is one of our standards that would be provided to a developer within, with the pre-sub conference, so they would know that a threat, what those fringe improvements are, uh, required.
And plenty of trees too.
I think that's the most important thing, and, and I think everyone at this table has said at some point, that's what would be important, so they do, because it's predictability and process clarity for developers, for staff. We all know what the expectation is going to, there's no surprises, we're not moving the goalposts, it's not if, and maybe, we know. In this circumstance, this is how we handle it.
Correct.
So I know it's gonna take some work to get there, but I appreciate you guys grinding through, because I think that is one of the biggest, um. Values that we can bring to this process, is that clarity and consistency, predictability really driven process.
You actually attract developers, when they know what your standards are, they will know I can buy this one, because I know the standards, I don't even need to go up to the counter, it's online, I got it. I'm gonna go buy this, and I'm moving forward with it, and right now, we can't give that certainty at the counter.
And they'll know the cost.
And they know the cost is, and they do perform a write-up front, right, and they know if it's worthwhile or not.
It'd be, it'd be nice to know during pre-sub, how people actually walk away from projects because of cost, right, that'd be nice to know, but. I mean, we know that.
I know how truthful.
The, the apartment deal, we know that didn't pencil out.
Well, they went, they went all the way, they went all the way through land use, and they got their plan unit development.
Yeah.
We hope that it's penciled out before they get to land use.
Yeah.
That's our goal, is to work with the, work with the developer before they even get to a land use process, because they have now spent a couple thousand dollars on a hearing, on that public hearing. So hopefully, we've done the research and, and penciled that project out before they even get to that land use hearing. Um, most of them have, you know, they've got, they've got our renderings, elevation, site plan, they've done some preliminary work to, to develop, you know, some costs at that point, so we hope. Certainly, we get to that point before, uh, before they actually apply for.
I feel like the holes haven't been in the development as much as, as this type of stuff, because the development, it's kind of been, you're doing it all, both, pretty much from.
Yeah.
For a while, so it's not like they're getting, what do you mean, I have to do roads? Where. Where as a absolute lot, it can be a sucker punch people. It's a lot of people just buy the lot, think I'm just gonna build one there. And then they get told, now you gotta do sidewalks. It doesn't mean they did the right, did it the right way, but it's it's different.
Yeah.
And I do think that Olympic master builders would be a good resource for staff on this because. Of course, they represent Mason County, but they also are working in the other jurisdictions. So they have a pretty good idea of. What roadblocks they're running into and and, you know, kind of, is this completely? Outside of standard and I don't think I can talk about tonight is unreasonable. So I think again, they'll appreciate some particularly and hopefully these days. Development moving forward.
Yeah, so we did go to the uh code committee this about a year ago. And this is similar to this exact same discussion that we have with them. And this pretty much, you know, it's following line, you you were at those. It's following lines, pretty much what we were talking about.
Absolutely. And and same understanding, right? This is an infill development issue, it's an infill development question. A lot of it. Um, a lot of conversations circle around that fifty percent, you know, um. Threshold, um, there is some, you know, there are some discussions back and forth whether that was an appropriate threshold. Uh, but I think that's gonna be, I don't know if you're not gonna have. A discussion around an appropriate threshold. If you go to sixty percent, go down to thirty percent, there's always gonna be s- somebody on each side of that line.
Well, today's values.
And we'll think of the preset too. If they do it in their feasibility study. Gives them a chance to know the cost, so then they can go back and not kill the project. They may negotiate a different price for the property.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record. I think that. Whether it's us as a city or association of Washington cities and working with our legislature, we really need to push. On the TBD expiration for small communities. That is one of our only funding sources for systematic improvements. And we are quickly seeing that go away and we've kind of. Talked about it at the thousand foot level, but it's something that I think that. ABC needs to close to look at, Troy should be working on. That's an easy something um that could affect a lot of communities in a really positive way.
We thought it was this month this year, but it didn't. No, we thought it would come up with the last session and it didn't.
When is it expire?
So I brought up a couple of times about putting larger scale projects together, uh, fittingly this morning, um. Who was this? Uh, Michael Snodgrass from Camp Wells Office, Senator Camp Wells Office Board over uh NOPO. For about five point five billion in funding to help cater, carry out. Rural surface transportation projects. Um, six hundred seventy-five million is set aside for rural projects that support and improve and expand. Surface transportation infrastructure in rural areas. Increase, increasing connectivity capacity. Um, the one caveat being is uh rural funding must be awarded in twenty-five million or greater amounts. Um, so that's what I'm saying is like, can we, I'm not saying we have a twenty-five million dollar payment project in one year. Uh, sorry.
Probably pay the whole city for that.
But well, then you know what I'm saying is like, why aren't we shooting for the moon on some of this stuff and 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 saying like, let's partner up with the. Let's partner up with the county on, you know, major extensions, uh, you know, not major extensions, but the. Larger scale projects that we can get fully funded. Federal dollars, we're not pursuing this stuff. We haven't in the past. Um, if they, every time they come and visit, you know, the EDA comes and visit, they're like this grant, that grant. Why aren't you applying for this? Why aren't you applying for that? They're dangling the carrot. Um, let's, let's look at some larger scale corridor projects. And partnering up with others um to make that a collective ask and and try to knock some of this out in the process of doing that.
What we're talking about with, you know, looking, whether it's county, port, whoever, looking some sort of a, a grant writing position that is. Funded by multiple entities because quite frankly, staff has stretched to, they have the capacity for this and we're missing out because of it. So we have to be willing to leverage some of those dollars in order to gain those resources.
Thank you, Dieter.
You guys did a great job.
The question, just kinda answered it, got them here now. That's helpful.
And defining things for us because we need definitions.
And refresh us.
And the pictures are great because it makes it, keeps our minds moving on. It it causes us to think of things that we probably should think about that is good at the end.
So give us a couple of months and we'll be back with some board stacking things and, you know, some better matrices, flow charts, uh, some pictures again. So we can see how they apply. And uh, one more of these sessions and we should be able to wrap it up, at least this subject. And then I'll be coming back to you with actually code revisions, um, municipal code and engineering standards. And uh, get this wrapped up in the coming months. Probably this fall. Sort of thing, okay?
Sounds good. Awesome. All right, don't get up yet. We got, we got four minutes. Is the council having you on for discussion? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Seventy-five P M.